Good evening and welcome to the April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five Regular Board of Education Meeting. We will start with the roll call, please.
Mr. Loop?
Here.
Mrs. Sully?
Here.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Here.
Mr. Nickram?
Here. And we'll start with Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And what's recited at the start of every board meeting is our vision and mission statement. Our vision statement reads, achieving distinction in all that we do, while our mission statement reads, cultivate an inclusive, high-performing culture of growth and community. Moving on to comments from audience on agenda and non-agenda items this evening.
Uh, yes, you have three speakers. The first is Justin Sager, a resident of Fort Atkinson.
Very good. I don't know if you're timing. Uh, good evening, um, members of the board, superintendent, district leaders, members of the Fort Atkinson Education Association and members of the community. My name is Justin Sager. I live at seven hundred North High Street, apartment one hundred eleven, and I serve as the president of the Fort Atkinson Association Education. On behalf of our dedicated educators across the district, I wanted to take a few moments to speak with you, not just in a reflection, but with hope for where we can go together. Uh, first, I'd like to extend a warm congratulations to Robin Sully, um, on her reelection. Uh, congratulations, um, and also to Kurt Lewis on his election. I also wanted to share my appreciation for Mr. Chris Rogers, uh, for the, uh, his time and dedication to this wonderful district. We appreciate your willingness to serve and look forward to the unique perspectives, um, that, um, that we'll be getting in the future. Every new term is a new opportunity for new collaborators and new collaborations, and we are genuinely excited about the possibilities. In the spirit of, uh, your new term, uh, coming up, the FIA's, this is sort of our FIA State of the Union in some ways. So let me share a bit where our educators stand. Our teachers continue to do incredible work under increasingly complex circumstances. They're showing up, innovating, adapting, and doing all they can for their students each and every day. At the same time, many are feeling the weight of uncertainty. It's not due to lack of care or resilience. It's often because they care so much. As changes arise and challenges emerge, our staff want to understand not just what is happening, but why. Uh, they need to be partners in this work, not just recipients of decisions, but contributors to solutions. Sometimes, though, it can feel like their voices aren't fully heard, even when they have so much insight and experience to offer. Take the recent conversation about the school calendar, for example. While we understand the need to make adjustments to best serve the, uh, students and families, um, excuse me. While we understand the need to make adjustments that best serve students and families, the process left many staff, um, feeling surprised and disconnected. We believe that bringing teachers' voices into these early stages of those conversations ensure for smoother communication, stronger understanding, and better outcomes for everyone involved. That's why tonight we want to share our vision, one rooted in collaboration. The union is here to be a constructive partner in the vision. We're ready to build something together. We propose the formation of district advisory committees, especially where teacher voices are regularly consulted, where ideas can be exchanged early, and where decisions are shaped with the insight of those who live the work every day. The staff members in the Fort Atkinson Education Association bring expertise, creativity, and commitment to the table, and we're ready to use those strengths to support district goals. Committees like these have been used in the past to help meet the needs of students and staff at both the school and the district levels. This would fulfill the needs of teachers to be truly be full partners in their work. When big changes are on the horizon, we can help prepare our colleagues, provide context, and build shared understanding. We don't need to be shielded from difficult information. In fact, involving us sooner may ease its delivery to improve its reception. We should be part of the communication process. Ultimately, we're here for the same reason, to serve our students and strengthen our schools. If we lead with trust, with empathy, and shared beliefs in, um, in each other's intentions, there's no challenges we can't navigate altogether. So, um, that's it. Thank you for your time tonight. And more importantly, thank you for your partnership. Um, we are here, we are listening, and we are ready to collaborate.
Hi. Next, you have Cynthia Fisnek, also a resident of Fort Atkinson.
Hello, I'm bringing up Nathan Fortney, too.
And we also have Nathan Fortney.
We're gonna go slightly out of order. Uh, good evening, board. My name's Nathaniel Fortney. I'm wearing my hat tonight as a member of the Fort Atkinson Regional Science Fair, uh, Board Committee tonight. Uh, the, uh, couple of weekends ago, we hosted the annual science fair on, uh, Sunday, April sixth, here in this space, and had about a hundred participants from the, uh, Fort Atkinson schools and surrounding areas. Uh, students from K through...
Twelve?
Twelve. Uh, yes, so, uh, spanning the whole, whole range, uh, in this, uh, space presenting their, um, their projects. This room, uh, fit our every space, uh, and every need, and allowed for, uh, ample space for the students to share their projects and also provide an opportunity for, uh, sharing, uh, science demonstrations, uh, with collaboration with members from UW-Whitewater. And, uh, the boardroom here, uh, served well for our, uh, awards presentation, and we wanted to thank you, the board, and, uh, express our gratitude to the district for allowing us to use this space. And we hope that we can partner with the district again, uh, in coming years to, uh, use this space again for future science fairs. Thank you.
And thanks to DJ Scullin for, uh, letting us use the tech equipment here and for training my son on how to use it, because I made him help us out. We had a whole bunch of Fort School students who won awards. I just want to name them so you know how valuable the science fair, it's a regional science fair, but how valuable it is to our students. Um, first, Allison Prisk, a senior at Fort High School, designed our T-shirts. We thought she did a great job with the T-shirt design, so she won a contest for that. Um, and then the place award winners for science fair projects, uh, in the kindergarten first grade division, uh, first place went to Laya O'Neill, who's in kindergarten here at Luther. Her brother Jordy won first place in the second grade, third grade division, and Corbin Schneider in third grade at Purdy won second place. Then we had fifth graders from Berry. Uh, Julie Recchab supported fifth graders in creating projects and bringing them to the fair. So we had our first place winner in the, um, fourth and fifth grade division was Lily Smith. Third place was Alfredo Hernandez. Uh, fourth place was Addie Brand. Fifth place was Charles Fortney. And sixth place was Taylor Bowman, and they are all fifth graders at Berry. Uh, Viviana Valades is in fifth grade at Berry, and her project was voted most practical. And then, uh, two seniors who did a project together, Owen Reeve and Jake Erstad, uh, their project was voted most creative. And one other thing that's really nice that our science fair is able to do is we provide a one hundred dollar credit to the teachers of the first place award winners. They can use that credit on any science materials, books, experiences, field trips, subscriptions, as they choose. And this is to encourage teachers to support student participation in the science fair. So those teachers in the Fort District, um, this year are Amy Schultz and Beth Hesselbacher at Luther, and Julie Recchab at Berry. So thanks again for allowing us to use this fabulous space. If you can picture, uh, I think it was ninety-three projects on tables, all in the space behind you, and, uh, UW-Whitewater professors demonstrating all kinds of stuff here. It was a really great place for it. Everyone was very appreciative. And, uh, they said, why haven't we been doing this all along? This is a great place. So we hope you'll have us again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more?
Final.
All right. Next up is the consent agenda this evening.
Robert's rules provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board in a single motion. Documentation concerning these items have been provided to all board members in advance to assure for an extensive and thorough review and will become part of the permanent record. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. This evening you have item A, minutes of the March twenty, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Item B, personnel. This evening, uh, we ask that you accept the resignation request effective at the end of the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year, that of Casey Turner, one point oh FTE math teacher at Fort Atkinson High School. Then item C, board policy update thirty-four point one, Title IX special update, and UGG Edgar special update. Item D, CISA two contract. Item E, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school nursing services contract. Item F, authorization to dispose of equipment no longer useful to the district. And then item G, gifts to the district. This evening, uh, we accept the following donations, that of a donation from Ginger and John Kemer, that of a two thousand eleven Chevrolet Impala, which has estimated value of four thousand nine hundred dollars for the high school automotive, uh, classes. Then also a donation from the Matkid Safety and Personal Protection, uh, Equipment, or PPE, with an estimated value of eighty-eight hundred dollars for the Fort Atkinson High School Technical Education and Agricultural Departments. Item F, budget transfers and requests, and item I, payment of district bills and the treasurer's report.
Thank you.
Uh, I move approval of the consent agenda with no removals.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Loop, a second by Miss Sully, and a roll call, please.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Loop?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes. All right, moving on to non-instruction of the agenda this evening.
Uh, yes, this evening, your first item is the nutrition services report. The board receives a report annually, um, from our nutrition services director, that is Keith Van Gilder. We're happy to, uh, welcome Keith for his very first inaugural, one and only
Thank you.
Nutrition services report. Make yourself comfortable and teach us something.
Uh, thank you, everybody, for the invitation, something that I had, you know, couldn't say no to, so good to see you tonight. But no, truly, thank you for your time and what you do for the kids and the community. Um, it's, uh, it's good care and, uh, and good work, and I'm sure it keeps you busy in ways that we don't understand. So, uh, correct, my first year as your nutritional director for the school district, although I've been with the district for going on three years. We have a lot of great things going on in all six kitchens, uh, certainly out of the high school kitchen where the food moves out of. Um, we have the need to use similar products that all schools have, too. They call them brown box commodities, and these things come in from the USDA. Um, and we make our food, uh, extra special, beautiful, and delicious, as well as, um, what the DPI needs to see us moving out to our kids every day. Um, this year has been, uh, not to bang our drum, but very successful. This hasn't been a year where large, um, new ideas have been moving forward, though we have a lot of good ideas, things happening, and good things in the hopper. But as you probably know, our nutritional department has been very successful. So this first year has been a year of transition and a year where I want to show consistency in our numbers. Uh, that's how many meals we put out toward our good students, um, consistency in our staff and the morale, and the, um, our ability to keep staff, um, and consistency in, um, service and what we put forward. Because what we, what we put forward is not just a third of a million meals a year, which does make us the busiest food entity in the town, but we put forward things that are, um, spirit and, um, personality and a welcoming to our, our students, such that their lunchtimes are, um, delicious and enjoyable and comfortable. So it goes well beyond food when you're looking at what the district brings to kids in our, in our school district. So this is just a synopsis of where we're at, um, where we are and where we're going. And as I said, nothing too flashy. This is a year of good consistency to keep, uh, the good processes that we've had in place, um, the reputation that we've got, um, our participation, uh, high and moving forward. Where we've been, so simply financials, um, everybody sees these numbers at the end of the year. Uh, I do believe that come, um, June thirtieth, we'll be, um, right around budget where we should be. Uh, we do have, uh, some spend downs over the last two years, and these were necessitated by the DPI. Uh, most nutritional programs got pretty flush with money throughout COVID. Um, and then we, when they saw those, um, balances, um, become, uh, sufficient, they want to make sure that their, some of their monies are put forward for capital improvements to keep you moving forward successfully for the short and long term. So, um, a couple of years ago, that was some rather fancy and lovely, um, ovens that went into two of our schools. Um, last year, we had our flooring redone in the high school kitchen. At that point, we decided to put in a new dishwasher, because as you could imagine, taking apart a twenty-year-old dishwasher and putting it back together might not work out so well. Um, and so we just took that opportunity to move forward with a large, a large investment. And that's most of that, um, number in the parentheses. So our meal served, again, you know, consistency in what we do. Um, we are crushing it, uh, for lunches at fifty-one percent. Um, the annual, uh, is, uh, the annual average is right around, I think, twenty-seven percent. Um, breakfasts are lagging behind, but it's interesting, and when you look at the different locations, some are doing quite well, some are rather average. So, you know, we're taking the moment to look at what's going well and, uh, reciprocate that, or, uh, and replicate that in our other, uh, in our other spots. Um, as well, you can consider if you've got teenagers, and I've had a couple, and I'm about to have another, they don't necessarily want to eat breakfast. People are quick in their mornings, and so breakfast is one of those things that it's, it's a little tricky. Backside number-wise, the reimbursables are much less for breakfasts. So if we're really doing well at lunches, that's fantastic. And again, if we're at fifty-one percent to the average twenty-seven percent, we're doing very well. Um, and again, I think that has a lot to do with the quality of food we put out, uh, the means that we put it out, and just the, the success we've had in the past that we're still, you know, uh, continuing with. Budget challenges, so simply stated, COVID is ridiculous. When you look at those years, it's almost an outlier. You can almost take twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three out when you're looking at graphs because things spiked. What's nice to see here, though, and should be noted, um, this year's pricing has gone down a little bit in most respects. I gotta say, that has a lot to do with the, um, cooperative that we're involved with. We're one district of maybe a hundred and forty within, within this cooperative. So our buying power throughout the state, um, pretty much tells Gordon Foods, which is one of our large purveyors, to, uh, we, we send them to task twice a year to get better pricing, and they come back with better pricing. So that's shown here, and that's to be enjoyed. Um, little spikes like lettuce last year had to do with, this is a food thing, fires out west. So lettuce was hard to come by in Arizona and California for a short while, but thankfully some things are coming back to, um, reality. Gloves were, gloves were something that, um, industries, um, abused for a couple of years during COVID. Um, glove pricing, that is. Supply, uh, supply chain disruptions, not as big of a deal this year as previous years, um, although the USDA has been consolidating warehouses, which means in the beginning of the year, it's sometimes hard to get those first brown box commodities that you're expecting. I did have to buy some things that weren't our usual chicken nuggets last September while things were still showing up to Gordon. Reimbursement rates, um, went up decently this year versus last. Um, I think that has a lot to do with the four billion dollar surplus that the state had, and some of that went over to the DPI. Beyond that, they're still less than they were in two thousand twenty-two, so our reimbursements are less than they were three years ago. We're trying to keep ahead of that with our pricing. We did increase pricing last year by a little bit. Um, our pricing is comparable to some regions around here. I, you know, took time to look at Milton and Jefferson and outlying districts to see what they charge. And then I looked at their menus to see what they offer, so interesting. I would suggest everybody do that. If you've seen some of our photos on Facebook, again, um, you know, if we're putting out fish stick at the high school, it's fish stick poke bowl now with some wonderful sides and a nice sauce drizzle on top. It's a presentation that brings kids in, the older kids especially. It's not just opening a box and heating. That doesn't capture anybody. So, um, staffing-wise, we are consistent to what we were doing last year, which is good, because, um, we're doing similar numbers to last year. Again, a continuation of good numbers is, is something that I think we should be happy for in this transitional year. Um, we did have a little change in, uh, uh, students coming down at the high school this year. We went from three lunch services to two, which means we had to get a little bit faster for two groups of students versus three. Same amount of staff. We've done so very successfully. Where are we now? Um, still doing great. So where, what are we doing better, though? I feel like our morale in the department is even better this year. Everybody probably knows Wizard of Oz was kind of fun this year, a carnival walk, and, um, uh, whatever, seventy-fifth or eighty-fifth anniversary. So that was our focus for Halloween. I think I saw a couple of you walk through the building on that day. Um, high five with us, laugh at us, whatever, it's good. DPI civil rights training, all DPI reporting and, um, uh, claims have been submitted properly. We've got more staff members that are certified in professional means that you typically see in a school district. We really take it seriously. Um, we have a, uh, annual Christmas party at the skating pond here that we do just for the twenty-four food staffs and whoever else wants to come over. I don't like to use the word family at work. We have families at home, but we, we really do care, and we take care of each other. One way that makes us better than the rest, and we really are moving to be the best or one of the best nutritional departments in the state of Wisconsin, something that should be emulated. Um, what makes us better? Scratch cooking. We have people who know how to cook. We have people who can create recipes and execute recipes at a scale of a thousand, fourteen hundred units in the hours that we have. It's not easy, but we do it, and we sometimes make it look easy. Um, we try and look at what kids are eating. We're not cooking for the average population. We're cooking for a very narrow group of certainly aged people. Um, what's trending? What do they like? They like bowls. They like handhelds. They don't like to use utensils so much. So what will get them interested, you're la, it's true, you know, it's true. Um, so we're looking at more bowls, more finger foods. Lovely second options. It's not just an Uncrustable. The second option is probably a salad or a wrap. So those are our chicken Caesar salads, bottom right. Upper right is our, uh, homemade birria tacos, Spanish rice, Mexican street corn salad, a lime cilantro slaw. You're sitting down at the best Mexican meal on Tuesdays in Fort Atkinson when you're at our high school. It's uncanny like that, and we're selling more than everybody else in town. And new entrees, burger bowl, birria tacos, shepherd's pie sold very well on St. Patty's Day, and I was astounded. And it was yummy. Uh, spinach quesadillas, not quesadillas, just pull-out-of-boxes. But it takes time and it takes care, um, but I think we get our food at a good price, and we work quickly, so we're making it work. Local foods are cool. Uh, we do get foods from, uh, from Jellies and Warm Belly Farms. Um, midway through the year, I got courageous enough to ask for better pricing, and I got it, so that's lovely. Um, almost the price of our purveyors out of Milwaukee for apples that come out of Fort, so it's pretty awesome. I'll do that quicker and more often next year. Um, catering sales, alternate revenue. So last year, we had a really good number. This year's number is gonna look more like twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, again, there's a delicate balance of what we can do. Um, our first mission is to feed these students here as they're here. Catering is, uh, very nice. Again, a transition year. Last year, I was your district chef. I worked really hard to make that number happen. This year, we're doing a good job. We won't quite hit that. Future includes, uh, again, a lovely district chef. Uh, we're gonna bring back our salad bar to the high school. So we're digging in more to, um, local foods, nutritional foods. Again, following the trends, there are more vegetarians now than ever before. Um, when kids move through our pizza line, they can grab a big salad as they go and turn it into a fully reimbursable meal more easily. It'll look nice. Um, Ford Farm's still going, and the potential of a greenhouse. We'll see. I don't want to promise too much. Increased variety, increased revenue. So when the high school lines turned into two quick lunches versus three lunches, we created a fourth line in the cafeteria. That's all of our salads, wraps, cold, grab-and-goes. That took about eighty kids out into that area so they wouldn't inundate our bigger lines. It looks beautiful. We've increased our sales for what I would consider green foods by twenty-five percent, which I think is lovely versus them grabbing a slice of pizza. Um, we'll continue with that. Other considerations to improve our breakfast numbers, these are conversations that are happening with me and the principals. And, and yeah, so the last line, just a new salad bar. It's gonna be like Pizza Hut in nineteen eighty-eight, but more healthy. Staff appreciation. Um, again, we have two dozen people working in food and nutrition, some for a dozen-plus years. These are people who show up every day, who smile welcoming at the kids. I truly tell my people, our people, this is a terrifically worthy job. You know, show up with pride, do it, do it to your best every day, and we do. Um, so, you know, celebrate these people. Uh, school lunch hero day coming up on May second, fun, fun photos. Even Katie and Mark freezing in the, in the freezer, smiling. Um, Kim and Cynthia, always smiling. So it's not just what we serve, it's how we serve it. So what do we do? Um, we are of the best nutritional departments in the state, and we're getting better. We're physically responsible. We're dedicated to quality. We slow down and make sure that it's happening. Um, we have surveys and feedback from students and, and staff. We care. Um, we support our local businesses. We have innovative menu ideas that aren't being replicated yet, um, and we value our students big time. This book here, The Labor of Lunch, was a, a doctoral thesis, um, that turned into a book from a professor at UW-Madison. Um, she was on WPR for an interview. It was terrifically informative. It's looking at the importance of these people in these nutritional departments throughout the country and how when we put our backing, and you really have, thank you, into these departments, you have people who are completely committed, putting out product that's better than you would expect to nourish these kids so that they can do as well as we want them to. So if you do want kind of a dull read over a weekend, get The Labor of Lunch. It's really great. And, and consider, again, you know, how important it is, the feeding, this hour every day that we put forward to our kids. And, um, lastly, a little photo of Candy, Ms. Candy, who worked for us for twenty-three years and, and recently passed on. A good, um, emulation of, of not just serving food, but providing with, with care. If anyone has any questions?
Thank you for that. Um, I, I can only imagine as I reflect on my situation at home of like how narrow a band they eat from Tuesday to Thursday. So, uh, we're going through like what you're choosing to, uh, put out there. I can, I can imagine it's, it's a difficult thing to do. But, uh, you mentioned this briefly, how we went from three lines at the high school to two lunch lines with, with the change in the schedule. Can you talk a little bit more about that, how that, how that went, and what you, what you've learned from that?
Well, it worked out really nicely, um, in that the previous food service director, Chris, had a few carts provided to us, um, in a grant, free. Well, it worked out really nicely in that the previous food service director, Chris, had a few carts provided to us in a grant, free, such that, and in fact, Katie puts one out here in Link, at Luther every day. Beautiful tools that we had so that we could put out cold foods, hot cookies, point of sale stations so we could take our records as we need to. But truly, it's, you know, it's what your, whatever's put in front of you, you need to pivot and make happen as best you can. Three lunches turned into two. We're talking 400 kids is a big difference. But very simply, how can we alleviate the pressure on those main lines? Well, we can put the grab and go food they love just outside of the cafeteria and make that truly fourth line. And gosh, everybody, I mean, we're, we're feeding our whole high school in 12 minutes, twice a day. We get everybody through the lines and out in the cafeteria. It's uncanny. And, and we have the tools ready and so it didn't affect budget. It was just us ready to go. A little bit of pivot in where one of our employees should be standing and we've been, we've been doing it since week two.
Help me understand, like, how do you, how do you understand where trends are going, what the kids are eating at the high school versus elementary school?
I have to dip into a little bit of just personal life and being a foodie who's been doing this for three, three decades. And I have three kids, so I'm listening to them, listening to their friends, talking to our students at the high school, but truly also looking at our production records. And I can see when our sales are high. I know what they like. I also know that the first time we put new recipes and menus out for them isn't a good measure of if they'll really like it, right? It takes about three times and a little bit of chatter to get people excited about a fish stick poke bowl. But when you taste those other sides, the spicy mayo drizzle on top, you don't realize you're eating commodity fish sticks right then. It's a really enjoyable bowl. So it's, it's a little bit of research, a little bit of instinct and a little bit of trying with the understanding that we can curb it and, and try a new recipe. That's going to move forward with more success next year just because, you know, I was, took the position third week of July last year. And so the menu creation last year was rather quick. Yes. And pardon, we've been able to continue with our staffing, add a new district chef with good ability, put in a great high school lead cook, which, pardon me, I was without for a year and seven months in my two years as district chef. So having that kind of ability in what I would call the high school kitchen, which pushes out our food to the smaller kitchens, is really allowing us to put forward delicious food.
So I'd like to say first of all that when my oldest daughter, who's been out of, out of the high school, out of the district for three years, when she heard that Candy had passed away, she was like, oh, Ms. Candy. And so I, I, I want to acknowledge you honoring her, but I also want to say that the impact that everybody in the district has on the students and their memories is really important. And I appreciate how much in your presentation you brought up your staff. And I think that that's really the sign of a true leader and the sign of a great staff and the sign of a good culture in a school. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think that that's really important, that everybody acknowledges the impact they have. Nobody's behind the scenes, so. I did want to ask a couple of questions, a couple of business questions. Is the catering number that you included in the revenue for the 2024, 25 total number?
Yeah, it goes right into the bucket of pluses and minuses for sure.
So, I mean, you talked about how, I mean, it looked like on the chart there'd been some revenue in three years and then the last two years there's been at a loss and I think the prices have fluctuated quite a bit. And we heard that last year with inflation and everything. Do you see that starting to stable out? I mean, I know it looks like you still have 397, 400,000 on the plus side, which helps for capital projects, but do you start to see that stabilizing?
Our capital project, our investments, those two years prior were large investments. Each of those ovens were tens of thousands of dollars and the dishwasher was $100,000. So that was truly 90% of that loss was just investment and also again stipulated truly by the DPI. So we couldn't have sat on it had we wanted to, but it's good. It's good that we have those tools to use. Yep, yep. Thank you for mentioning that about Candy.
And then I just wanted to ask, are there snacks available during the day outside of the normal lunchtime and breakfast times?
There aren't. Currently, there aren't. Students who have the medical need to have snacks do have snacks in the nurse environments in the schools. The high school does have some paid for machines that run that are only like beverages, but those don't operate during lunchtimes, of course. So, so no, no. Snacks isn't something we, we have readily available or kind of floating about.
Well, I hope you're able to share this at conferences and with other districts, the great stuff you're doing here. But I think that you're, it looks like you're striking a great balance between the business side of things and looking at it from a fiscally responsible way, but also from a quality side of things, that you have customers and those customers need to be satisfied. So I appreciate that. I appreciate all the staff.
Good. Yeah, we just put our QR code of survey out to the high school a couple of weeks ago. Their interest in, you know, new recipes, new, new ideas, what they might want to see. Their interest in having that salad bar come back. So it's very courageous, let's say, putting a survey out to a high school. But we'll see.
I just want to say that your department is, I mean, you guys have done such incredible work from, for years and years and years. I mean, years and years and years. Every time I've gone to the high school or gone to the elementary school, I'm eating lunch with my kids because I have kids in elementary and in high school and it's always so good. I, I like wish I worked in Fort so I could go to the, go to the high school for lunch every day because it is so incredibly good and it's so tasty. Absolutely love it. And every time I see any of your staff out in the community, I always see kids from all grade levels recognizing them, going up to them, giving them high fives, giving them hugs. You know, it's, it's just, it's so heartwarming to see that from this department because, you know, in the past, like, you know, me growing up lunch ladies and, you know. But now that stigma is totally gone and it's like, yeah, these guys, these people are amazing. They're so helpful. You can, you know, go up and talk to them. So it's really, I mean, it just really makes my heart warm that we have such an amazing department that is doing such good work, not only to, you know, feed our students, but to help them, you know, as a complete student. And I just think that's absolutely amazing. So you guys are doing wonderful work.
Thank you. Well, thank you. The kids who need it, who eat 10 meals a week with us, that's 10 out of 21, three square meals a week, right? I mean, that's, that's half their food. So, yeah, good. Thank you. We try. Does anybody want to shed a tear? I could, I wrote a poem for Candy upon her retirement last June. So we sat down at one of the local golf places and had margaritas up in Jefferson and I read her this. Do we have 40 seconds?
Sure.
Okay. So, you know, yeah, I'll do this when somebody retires or if it's their special birthday or something. This is called the saga of lunch lady Candy. I wasn't going to read this, Nathan, but I'm going for it. Here's, this here's the story about a certain lunch lady. Her name is Ms. Candy and she's anything but lazy. She's been with Fort for just a short while. In those 23 years, she's shared many a smile. In fact, her demeanor makes all the kids giddy and her retirement is kind of a pity. But we know she's earned this next chapter in life, so we'll just high five and hug her. No strife. If life is measured in love and care, then Ms. Candy is stationed beyond compare. For it's not the reminder to eat all your veggies, but the glimmer in her eye that fed all the kiddies. Many sweethearts you've known and many students you've helped. Your kindness and care will not be forgotten or shelved. So as we open the door and you exit the cafeteria, the world will experience a little more hysteria because the smile that you've kept within our walls is headed out into the world for one and all's. Your smile will make smiles and smiles will abound and we sure do hope to see you around. So thank you, Ms. Candy. It's been our pleasure to work with you, laugh with you and be together. That's how we feed kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to budget projections.
Yes. So first, we're going to welcome Mr. Nathan Knit, our Director of Business Services, and then Mrs. Mandy Turnbull, our Director of Human Resources. And they'll be giving you a budget update as well as an update on the compensation market adjustments and then eventually seeking action from the board on three different items. That of individual staff contracts being issued as well as updating the market compensation system to the data that Ms. Turnbull will be sharing and then eventually opening negotiations with the Fort Atkinson Education Association.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to take a look back at where we've been financially speaking. So this will hearken back to the budget projections from January. I'll update the board on changes that have happened since then. We will look at the evaluation of budget decisions to confirm we're moving in the right direction. And then I'll turn it over to Ms. Turnbull to talk about compensation and health insurance. So looking back, the chart shown here should look familiar from the January school board meeting where we discussed the five-year budget projections. So for the 24, 25 fiscal year, which we're currently in, a reminder to the board that thanks to the successful passage of the operating referendum, we are operating at about an $850,000 surplus. Next year, we are projected to be just under $1 million in the red. And then looking to 26, 27, we're looking to be about $3.8 million in the red, assuming literally nothing changes between now and June 30th of 2027. These projections will be updated at the June board meeting when I discuss what the preliminary budget looks like. But just as a reminder that this is where we are right now with the information in front of us. In the January board meeting, I discussed how the budget projections show for a 5% increase in compensation that does include the annual CPI, cost of living adjustment, that we projected at 3% and the market adjustments for our compensation system at 2%. So again, the 3% and the 2% get us our 5% compensation total increase. For health insurance, we projected a 12% increase in the cost to the district for health insurance for this year and each year going forward. The updated information today compared to January, CPI has been certified for public employees at 2.95%. So we are pretty darn close to where we projected on that piece. Ms. Turnbull will discuss in greater detail what the market adjustment increases look like. We also recently received our health insurance renewal rate and that is at 8.9%. And again, Ms. Turnbull will talk more in detail about how we got to that point, but we do have a little more concrete number there. We're still waiting on a number of other expenditures. So our property insurance, our workers' comp, some of those bigger pieces, transportation, et cetera. Those are still in the pipeline and I'll come back in June with revised assumptions if we don't have those numbers locked in quite yet. The other big elephant in the room is we do not know the exact status of the 2025, 2027 biennial budget. Historically, the state has passed a budget usually mid, end of June. In years past, it could be a little bit later. So we're right now estimating what will come of that and that's the $325 under the revenue limit per student. But we haven't heard anything concrete yet about the budget. So just as a heads up, we know roughly where expenses, a lot of those major pieces are, but the revenue side we're still waiting on. The next piece for the board to discuss and to continue to provide administration direction and advisement on are the strategic evaluation of budget decisions. So this slide should look pretty familiar, but just wanting to confirm that we're moving in lockstep together, that our ongoing budget priorities are to provide a competitive compensation and benefit package for this year and all future years. We work to align staffing to current and forecasted student enrollment and program needs. The administration will continue to evaluate all vacancies for possible attrition and/or restructuring. And we, as an administration, continue to analyze current programming to prioritize the return on investment and recognize opportunities for strategic abandonment. That being said, if the board has additional priorities that they want us to focus on or if there are things that we need to tweak, we are always open to, to receiving that advisement and direction. That being said, I will turn it over to Ms. Turnbull to talk about compensation and health insurance.
Thank you, Nathan, and good evening. As you've heard me say time and time again, staff are our biggest expense as a district, making up right around 80% of our budget. This evening, I'll be sharing some important updates and recommendations related to compensation for our staff and our health insurance benefits, two of the biggest drivers of our people as a budget item. Our current compensation system was implemented in 2015, 16, so we're about a decade in, and is built around three core interests. Attract and retain high-quality employees, reward for doing a good job, and cost of living adjustment, and honoring experience and longevity. We use a market-based approach, gathering updated data each year for every position in the district. This data comes from a carefully selected group of comparable districts identified by staff groups and based on key factors such as size, geographic proximity and enrollment. Our system is designed to be responsive and adaptive. Through a structured appeals process, we're able to make annual adjustments based on changing market conditions and internal developments. The process ensures that our compensation practices remain competitive, equitable and sustainable over time. As you hear from, I think, everybody who comes up here and talks to you, we have a lot to be proud of, right? And that same is true for our compensation system. Each year, I share that our district is seen as a leader in this area, being recognized at regional partnership meetings and across the state. What sets us apart is our data-driven approach. Every hiring decision is grounded in real, current compensation data, ensuring our practices are consistent and competitive with our comparable districts. Much of this data comes through our active participation in the statewide compensation partnership, which has expanded from being a regional initiative to now including over 50 districts across the state. Transparency is another cornerstone of our system. Staff know that their market rates are based on actual data, reinforcing trust that their compensation is fair and aligned with peers in similar roles. In addition, as mentioned before, we have the formal process for reviewing compensation adjustment requests through the appeals process. The process uses current year market data and includes multiple perspectives, including input from you as the board, rather than relying on decisions made by just one or two people. It's a system that not only ensures fairness, but also supports professional growth and continuous improvement. So the recommendations before you tonight are full market increases and full longevity increases for all eligible staff across every staff group. So I'll take a few minutes here to take a closer look at what the recommendations mean by staff group. For our certified staff group, we were able to collect current year data from 13 of our 16 comparable districts. For the remaining three districts, we did use prior year data obtained from the DPI's annual staffing report, which is our customary practice. Key findings in this group are an overall market increase of 1.89%. The average increase between five-year experience bands equates to 8.3% or just over $5,000. And the average And the average difference between a bachelor's and a master's degree is just over $4,000. These data points help staff to understand the value of experience and longevity in their compensation trajectory, as well as the financial impact of advanced degrees, which reinforces the importance of continued professional growth among our staff. For our support staff group, we were able to gather current-year data from 10 of our 13 comparable districts, and this is evidenced by that compensation partnership initiative that I was talking about. I think this is the highest number of comparable districts we've been able to use for our data that I have seen since I've been working with the compensation system. So again, participation in the compensation partnership allows us to have data that is increasingly reliable and consistent year over year. Key findings in this group are a 1.03% overall recommended increase. The administrative staff group includes both certified and non-certified administrators. For '25-'26, we were able to collect current-year data from 13 of our 18 comparable districts, and the overall recommended increase is .93%. This is a snapshot of all of the staff group data that I just reviewed, put in one screen for you along with the totals. So you can see the total cost of the recommended market and longevity increases across all staff groups is just shy of $350,000, which amounts to a 1.6% increase for both market and longevity adjustments. As Nathan mentioned on Slide 5, 5% was allocated in the bus budget for compensation adjustments, including these market and longevity adjustments, along with CPI. By taking action on tonight's recommendation to approve market and longevity adjustments, the district will be well-positioned as we enter into negotiations for cost of living increases, ensuring both fiscal responsibility and competitive compensation for our staff. The other main driver of our expenses as related to people is health insurance, and I'm excited to share some additional good news here. For the '25-'26 plan year, there will be no changes to the design or coverage of our health plan. A few highlights are that the district will continue our current premium share split, covering 87.4% of the overall premium cost, leaving employees responsible for only 12.6% of the premium for the health insurance. We'll continue funding our health savings accounts at the same dollar amount and on the same schedule, which leaves our employees with a $250 deductible experience for single plans and a $500 deductible experience for family plans. These decisions help ensure our staff continue to have access to high-quality and affordable health care. To sustain the plan in the future, we'll also continue our ongoing efforts to manage and control rising health care costs while exploring opportunities to enhance our value for our employees. As Nathan shared at the beginning of this presentation, our budget projections included a 12% increase to overall health insurance premiums. While our initial renewal did come back at 14.9%, I'm pleased to report that through the continued diligence of our brokers, we were able to successfully negotiate that down to 8.9%. This is a strong outcome, especially when compared to surrounding districts, and I'm glad nobody from those districts is here, because many of them are seeing increases ranging from the high teens to low twenties in their health insurance renewals. With health insurance renewal trends and medical inflation continuing to rise, our focus will need to remain on keeping our plans sustainable and high-performing. One of the key drivers of our plan is our medical loss ratio, and that did increase from 100% to 112% during the last measurement period. This means the plan paid out 12% more in claims than we paid in premiums, which again is a main driver of our renewal rate. So, looking ahead, we'll emphasize employee education to help stretch those health care dollars further while maintaining access to high-quality health care, and the efforts will support better plan performance to help mitigate future premium increases. In addition to offering high-quality and competitive health plan, we're committed to continuing our full suite of voluntary benefits for our staff. All the benefits that you see on your screen are continuations of benefits offered last year, with the exception of the voluntary hospital indemnity benefit in red, which will be a new offering for our staff in '25-'26. All of the voluntary benefits are provided at affordable group rates and are cost-neutral to the district, with rate guarantees in place for our staff through 2027. The benefits have been shaped and added by staff feedback and helped distinguish us from other districts in the region, many of which do not offer this level of flexibility and choice for their staff members. We're in the process of finalizing a few details related to our renewals and the addition of the new hospital indemnity benefit, but staff can look forward to open enrollment information being shared before the end of the school year. So to recap, the recommendations included in the compensation portion of the presentation, those things that are going to require board action, the board should consider approval of the '25-'26 proposed market adjustments for all eligible staff across all staff groups, which include both full market increases and full longevity increases for all eligible staff. Looking ahead, our compensation work will continue as we begin negotiations with FIA and evaluate potential cost of living adjustment for all staff groups. And then the board should also consider this evening approving the issuance of certified staff contracts for '25-'26. Before the board takes action on these items, I'd like to open up the opportunity to answer any questions either from myself or from Nathan from the board.
It's not there, I appreciate that. You mentioned that initially our insurance premium was, came in at 14.9%. Through broker, through our brokers, we've got that down to 8.9%, and we budgeted 12% increase. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. What are we talking about, cost savings between that 8.9% and 12%? Do we know roughly what that is?
I came prepared to answer a lot of questions. That wasn't one of them, so I'm glad Nathan is here.
Yep. The savings from the 12% down to the 8.9% is about $394,000 for next year in savings.
Yeah, really nice work.
Yeah, you know, I just want to point out, I was going to wave, but I'll do it now. You know, we hear about things that staff aren't happy about, and one of the things that staff should be pretty happy about is that your board and former boards have worked to maintain incredible benefits in this school district. And what you have presented to you this evening is possible because of the hard work of Ms. Turnbull, our brokers, and other people in working tirelessly to make sure that we understand what the market is, understand what's possible, and working people until it hurts in order to keep those benefits here. We have not messed with the level of benefits. We have not messed with the cost to staff. We have not done anything to diminish the quality of benefits in the school district, which is an area of great expense to the school district. So the efforts to work down to that 8.9% as you just heard is a savings, so to speak, of a projected budget of $300-plus thousand. And I think that's an area that staff really need to consider and appreciate, because it's something that in other area districts, people are noticing very quickly, that as those diminish, those are actually pay cuts.
Are staff given a whole benefit scenario where it includes their compensation, their benefits? I know, like, my company does that, where they're like, here's everything. Because when we look at, you know, if somebody gets an offer from another place, they might be shown the benefits in terms of life insurance, health insurance, this, that. And we've seen a lot of movement across the state, and, you know, people leaving, people coming, people going. But you're not necessarily comparing apples to apples. You're comparing apples to puppies to Chevy trucks. So do we provide that kind of whole benefit analysis to each staff member?
We do not currently. Staff, I believe, do have access to pull that on their own through Employee Navigator. That's something else that sets us apart from other districts. We are able to provide our staff with a benefit administration system, which means that they have 24/7 access to all of their plan information, all of the cost information to update and change their benefits, and so on. That is certainly something that we could look at providing for our staff in the future. But like you said, it is hard to measure apple to apples. I just recently saw that there has been a site published across the state where you can look and see the value of each district's benefits and the costs and all of that. But what isn't taken into account there is how we fund our staff's HSA compared to how another district might fund their HSA. So, you know, if you're looking at two plans that have a $6,000 deductible and they cost you $250 a month, the plans aren't the same when one HSA is funded at $5,500 and another one is funded at $3,000. So that's one of the challenges in providing something that really clearly explains what the value of that is, but it's certainly something that we could explore and I think would be insightful to staff.
Yeah, I mean, when you start to have to do too much math, right, and too much digging and creating spreadsheets, then that gets a little cumbersome. I've done it before, you know, evaluating insurance programs. But yeah, I think that being able to see your salary, but also being able to see the additional benefits, because it's just a term benefit, but when you look at what that real whole package is compared to, you know, either another offer or just how that whole compensation does, you know, impact your pocket. So I think that that would, I think that that's an interesting thing to look at and something that needs to be just realized, even if we don't have the model to be able to do that. Nathan, when you were saying the 5% for the comp increase, what number is that in the budget in terms of dollars? From last year's budget, that 5% increase to this year's budget?
Just to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking the, what is the 5% based on, or what is the 5% as a whole?
What is the 5% in a dollar amount instead of just as a 5%?
The 5% is based on...
It can be round, too.
Let me go back.
I was just, when you see, like, the savings from health insurance of, you know, what we projected at 12%, and now it's 8.9%, and then you see that we, you know, we projected a budget of 5%. I just, the percentages are good, but the dollars, you know, 5% could be based on $1,000 or it could be based on a million dollars.
Yep. A good question there. The 5% is based on the, I'm borrowing one of Mandy's slides here, is based on the $21,574,494. So it'd be 5% of that number.
5% of $21 million.
1 million and change.
Yeah, okay.
Very round estimate.
Yeah, I got you. That's, that's...
And just to point out as well, this is a budget projection. So these numbers are numbers that have been prepared for you, which I know you realize I'm just making clear for others, as a way to look at a potential budget heading into next year. So that 5% does not represent any obligation for you to either update the compensation system with the data that you're given this evening, or later you will potentially be opening negotiations with FIA. It in no way entitles that negotiation to be determined to any amount. It is simply a placeholder, and I just want to make sure others are clear that that's the case in a projected budget for next year.
I have a few, hopefully, related questions. Excellent work on negotiation with insurance. Is that an annual event for you?
Yes. Every year, our renewal is based on the plan performance of a prior measurement period, as well as a whole slew of other factors. And so every year, in March, we anxiously await what that number will be.
Okay. And, but for, like, long-term planning purposes, I'm sure, you know, there are a lot of calculations that go into, you know, we assume a 12% increase in health insurance because of general historical trends. Are we keeping that going forward? And that will lead me back to the annual operating surplus and deficit question that I might have.
Correct me if I'm misspeaking, but I believe right now, we do have 12% in the budget moving forward. I'm continually talking to our brokers about what medical inflation looks like, what they're seeing in terms of trends. One of the nice things that we have with the brokers that we use is they don't have a huge book of business for school districts, so the majority of their clients either have January 1st renewals or July 1st renewals. So they get to see a little precursor to what our renewal might be to help inform what we should be looking forward to.
I think that's an area that we've always tried to forecast, to the best of our knowledge. It's definitely not an area that we would forecast low...
Right.
And then hope for the best, just because it is such a significant number, should that be a spike, which is what a number of districts are seeing in our comparables. I mean, we have some at 23.9% renewals, and some in the neighborhood of where we are, but most in those high teens. So it really can vary quite drastically.
That brings me back to, and maybe this is a more Nathan Knit question, the annual operating surplus deficit slide, there's that black vertical line, and that is the next referendum.
Correct.
And so the steep drop-off there is assuming no new referendum...
Yep.
...passage. Okay. And assuming state funding is flat from the previous biennial budget?
It's assuming everything is the same exact as it is today, and no, there has been nothing changing in the future. So again, your comments on, again, the numbers look very different. You know, there's a drastic difference between '26-'27, but that's to highlight, we are on a non-recurring, or sorry, we are on a, yeah, non-recurring referendum. So after '26-'27, that comes off of the books, unless there is another, you know, unless something else happens in the future.
And then, and assumes the same level of state funding going forward in the next biennial budget?
Yep. It assumes the same state funding and is using the enrollment projections that we've had in the future, or in, from the past, looking at future years, and then also assumes, and as Dr. Abbott mentioned, the salary increases. We put a placeholder number in for future salary growth and for health insurance costs. So we see our costs continue to go up in the future, but as of today, I'm using the best numbers that we have available to us.
Thank you.
The compensation also is 5% projected forward?
We projected back in January, 5% for next year, and we built a placeholder of 3%.
For, for future?
Yep, for every year in the future beyond that. Again, as a placeholder to show that we don't want to assume a 0% because we don't know what the future will bring.
Is it fair to say, Nathan, that given some of the volatility we're seeing in other parts of our governmental organizations, that that's something that we might reconsider if we see a significant increase in inflation, or there's other indicators that CPI might spike as it did in the past? Correct?
Yes. These projections are always open to be reviewed. The 3% has been based on the Fed's goal of keeping inflation to 2%, and the historical market compensation adjustments have historically been about 1%. So using the Fed's target plus where things are, this year, for the market adjustments, we knew that in the last couple of years, we didn't quite get to CPI, so we wanted to build a little cushion, knowing that the market adjustments would catch us up. But historically, we've gone with what has been considered traditional and stable. But every month, I talk to dozens of business managers about where inflation is at, and we are starting to see it creep back up. So as those things develop, that we will continue to revise our assumptions.
I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, but it also assumes that the revenue from the federal government that we've been receiving is also included in there. And what, do you have a round number of what that is, or percentage of our budget, what that is as far as revenue?
Yep. This, the operating dollars, so the chart that you see here, that includes just over $1 million in federal revenue. So about 60% of that $1 million is in the IDEA flow-through, that's a special ed program, that we get those dollars from the federal government. The other big piece of that is Title I funding, and then we have a couple other federal title programs that bring us, and then also E-Rate, which is a technology grant through the federal government. grant through the federal government, that those total about $1.1 million. So then our budget is about $42-ish million. So as a percent, that's about 2%, 2.5% of our budget. The other big piece we haven't talked about traditionally, I shouldn't say traditionally, we don't talk about as much, for our nutrition services program, we receive about 3/4 of a million dollars in federal aid through the Free and Reduced program. So if that were to no longer be a thing, we would have to reevaluate those financial pieces. The other comment I'll make to that is because of the timing of the federal government versus the state budget, right now for '25, '26, we will assume probably a slight decrease in federal funding on the operating side, but we haven't, we hear in the news, things are going on. But within business manager circles, we think that for the next year, things will be, or things have already been appropriated because of the, I don't say the mismatch in calendars, but the federal government is already operating on 2025. And so that funding will go through the next school year. Again, that is subject to change, so please don't 100% hold me to that. But the assumptions that will come forward in June will highlight what we know as of that time. But right now, we're assuming most of that funding will still be there.
I do appreciate the asterisks you put on everything, which is, this is subject to change, because, I mean, it's, it's true. Every time you present, the budget numbers shift a little because as the year goes on, you get more information. And then as the next month comes, then maybe there's less information, or there's maybe more expenditure. So I do appreciate that, that, you know, you're like, don't hold me to this 100% because there is a lot of uncertainty. And there always is, but I think right now we've seen in the last few years, a lot of uncertainty. I did want to ask about the compensation model. I just want to kind of highlight what that does. I know we talk about it every year, but because it's only talked about once a year, I think it's important to understand what that model does and how it positions us across other dis, or how it positions us against other districts in terms of compensation to staff in their, as their salaries.
So each staff group is a little bit different simply because of the data that we have available and the way that it makes sense to group it. But essentially, what we do is we get thousands and thousands of lines of data, both from the compensation partnership that we participate in and from the state staffing report. And we group like positions. So for example, in the certified staff group, all positions are grouped into five categories, and that's simply so that there's enough data in each group to build a reliable model. And those, those positions are grouped in kind. And then we break that down even further in five-year bands and also delineate between a bachelor's and a master's degree. We do a little scrubbing of the data to make sure that all of the data is high quality that we're putting into our model. And then each cell, if you will, represents the median value for the current year that we have been able to ascertain from that data, meaning that that model tells us reliably what the market is paying those positions in this current year, with the assumption that if CPI is applied to that, staff will be compensated fairly in the year that they are earning the compensation as it relates to what the market would support. It's a very, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, and we do the compensation model right around the same time we do the employee contracts, because the employee contracts are based on what that adjustment would be if there is an adjustment for each, for a staff member.
Yes. We find that the compensation model is a very valuable tool in both our recruiting and our retention efforts. And staff feel much more comfortable signing a contract for the upcoming school year if they know beyond a doubt minimally what their compensation is going to be and if there will be an increase associated with that. So we find that, that staff are much more interested in signing those contracts when they've got some more information to guide them into the next year.
But not every staff member is impacted as far as an increase on what that contract amount would be. It's just those who fall below the median.
Correct. So in some cases, the median does go up from year to year. In some cases, it stays the same. And in some cases, our data actually shows that the median goes down. But one of the enhancements that we made to the system a few years back was that if the median goes down based on the data analysis, we continue to use the prior year's hiring median. We found that that's most beneficial to staff as they consider their longevity in the district. If they know next year or in two years, they're going to get an increase to a certain dollar amount, and then when they move into that band, that median goes down. That doesn't feel great. So we took that step to do the right thing for staff, and so those medians will always stay the same or increase from year to year.
Okay. So there's not a volatility of next year, I might be making $1,000 less. Oh, now if I go into this next five-year band, it might be $2,000 less. That it's bringing people up to a median or they're above it.
Right. So if they're moving from one five-year band to another, or if they're in the process of earning their master's degree, they're not thinking, oh, I'm going to get a $4,000 increase, or I'm going to get a $5,000 increase, and then they're only getting a $3,000 increase.
And as you showed, this is for all staff, support staff, admin staff, as well as certified staff?
Yes. So the, the system looks a little bit different for different staff groups. For example, support staff, the way the data is reported, longevity isn't calculated the same way. It's not reported reliably. So we have a different way to honor longevity in that group. But essentially, the same concept applies across all of the staff groups. We do have a compensation website that is available to anybody that's interested in that. I would encourage anybody that has questions to go out there. We've got lots of FAQs. We've got all of the historical market information, and that can be found right, right by accessing on the district website.
Just to review, the way the compensation system was set up, it would have been possible for people to see a reduction in pay. And that was an enhancement that the administration brought to the board, that the board at that time approved, so that that wouldn't be the case. Also, just to mention related to support staff, that's an area where I believe it's fair to say the data has been a little trickier over the years. And so it's not uncommon to see Mandy and her team literally going through thousands of cells of data from different districts who call things different position names and then trying to cross-reference. So there's been a huge effort to compare apples to apples the best possible in order to get those groups big enough for them to have statistical significance. So that's a piece that I think the system has really continued to grow in over the years as this data set has continued to grow as well.
Yes. To Dr. Abbott's point, especially when new districts begin participating, I look at that data very carefully to make sure it's of the highest quality. And then I look at medians to make sure nothing is skewing the data. So we had a new district participate in the support staff analysis this year. I noticed some anomalies and actually made a phone call to that district to make sure that the data that we were using, how we were grouping it and so on, supported our compensation the way we were expecting it to.
I mean, I have to say, the last, you know, few years being, three years being on the board, I think the compensation model sets us up in a good position and staff in a good position to be at that competitive, you know, competitive place that we want to be with benefits, putting us, you know, all staff at a median or higher level. And I know that with challenges in the last few years of being able to meet CPI and not being even further in debt has also been challenging. But I think that the compensation model has been a good way to keep us competitive against area districts.
Yeah. And, you know, certainly something that, that I've grown to appreciate over the years is, is knowing that we offer a very competitive wage and also with the benefits, knowing that that's always stayed consistent over the number of years I've been on the board. The boards have worked hard to ensure that that's always been the case.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's something that, you know, may not come on the paycheck that we're, that we've realized. But when we see, you know, percentage increases that could very well easily be in the high teens or low 20 percentage, you know, I'm appreciative of every year when we're able to fight those battles. And, yeah, I think it's something that's, you know, at times flies underneath the radar.
We appreciated the Assemblyperson Fitzgerald and Senator Ratcliffe hosted a budget Q&amp;A session last week in Fort Atkinson to listen to constituents regarding their thoughts, questions, and input. And I know a couple of you were able to attend as well, which we appreciate that personal connection. We've made it very clear all along that one of the things that could help our district and all 420 other public school districts in the state of Wisconsin is for the new biennial budget to increase the reimbursement rate for special education. And if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make an appeal to the state legislature as they consider whether or not to move a budget forward in a timely manner and to impact that red line, which would directly impact the size of a operational referendum moving forward, that is the appeal to make. We are looking for an equitable reimbursement for special education services that of 60% compared to the sub-30 that we're currently receiving. So as we're mixing two sort of topics, our budget projections, and we're in the middle of processing a new potential biennial budget in addition to working on these staffing issues, I feel like that's worth repeating every chance we get.
Yeah, and I think it's, you know, it's easy to say, oh, the operation, you know, operational referendum passed last year, so we can not think about it for another three years. But this shows us, we have to be thinking about it.
Yep.
And we have to have it out there that if the state revenue is not going to support it, the community has to support the district. And that is a hard message. I'm paying taxes over here. Now you're asking me to pay more. Now you're asking me to, you know, approve this referendum. And, yeah, I mean, operational referendums just are, you're hearing it. And at that, you know, listening session, you heard it, that it's exhausting and people are exhausted doing it across the state.
While maintaining staff pay and benefits and maintaining quality people working with your children.
And while maintaining actual teachers wanting to teach.
It's not just our district either. It's every single district in the state of Wisconsin has to go through the operational and, you know, asking the community to help pay. The state is not, and the federal government is not. So voicing opinions to, to anyone in the federal government or state government is always helpful.
Yeah, or you can email the Joint Finance Committee.
Yeah.
That's right.
Email, too. You know, any of that stuff, it helps us greatly.
I just wanted to say, again, I always think it when, when either of you are presenting. Thank you so much for your vigilance and your careful stewardship of taxpayer money and always keeping in mind how, how best we can serve our students, be it, be it compensation models or, you know, nutrition services, everything. I really appreciate it. It really, your work really brings stability, I think, to this district, and that really goes a long way in the quality of our education. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
All right.
So there's a motion in front of us.
There is.
Be it resolved that the school district of Fort Atkinson adopt the following compensation structure for the '25, '26 fiscal year, that practices from the implementation of the compensation model in '24, '25 be carried forward, increase staff pay rates which are identified to be below their respective market value analysis median to their market value analysis median, approximately $330,764 for all staff, recognize another year of service towards market value placement for certified staff and longevity salary adjustment for all groups, approximately $13,775 for all groups other than certified staff market value placement adjustments, that no adjustment in pay will be awarded to those having an active improvement plan on their first day of work in the '25, '26 fiscal year.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Selly, a second by Ms. Reynolds, and a roll call, please, Ms. Haas.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Lu?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to open negotiations with Fort Atkinson Education Association.
Yes. As I mentioned earlier, this is a mechanism by which the board needs to take action to engage in negotiations with the certified union that is Fort Atkinson Education Association. By opening negotiations, there is no implied timeline as to when that might happen, nor is there any obligation as to any monetary or remuneration that may be part of that negotiation. It is simply the mechanism by which those invitations can be made.
Sure.
All right. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve opening base wage negotiations with Fort Atkinson Education Association, FEA, for the collective bargaining agreement covering the 2025, 2026 school year.
I'll second.
All right. Do we have a motion by Mr. Lu, a second by Ms. Selly, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. All right. Next up, individual certified staff contracts.
Yes. As discussed just a few minutes ago, this is the time of the year where the board is able to take action and individual contracts are offered to staff. They have a period of time by which they can decide whether or not to sign said contract, but we'd sure like to give them that option sooner than later.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the insurance of individual employment contracts and additional contract days as proposed for certified staff for the 2025, '26 school year.
Second.
All right. Do we have a motion by Ms. Reynolds, a second by Mr. Lu, and a roll call, please?
Mr. Lu?
Yes.
Mrs. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Reynolds?
Yes.
Mr. Nickram?
Yes.
All right. Next up is certification of election results. I believe that is you, Mr. Lu.
All right. An election for the school board was held on Tuesday, April 1, 2025. The Board of Canvassers convened on April 7, 2025 at 2:00 p.m. to verify and certify the results. There were two open seats on the school board. Candidate Robin Selly received 3,667 votes. Candidate Kurt P. Lewis Jr. received 2,632 votes. And candidate Siobhan Bowen received 2,484 votes. The elected board members, Robin Selly and Kurt P. Lewis Jr., will take office and begin their three-year term as school board members on Monday, April 28, 2025.
Thank you. Next is items for future board meetings.
Yes, we have quite a few items, a few of them to highlight. Board Policy Special Update Act 20, which is the policy that is required as part of the literacy rider that was on the last biennial budget, to which you received a report in January, I believe. Open enrollment requests, the school nursing services update, and many more topics to come.
Fantastic. All right.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education adjourn?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Reynolds, a second by Ms. Selly. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. All right. We adjourn at 6:57 this evening.